Good evening, welcome to our regular scheduled board meeting. I want to thank you for your presence and at this time, roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mrs. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
Mrs. Lasher.
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Present.
At this time, we will be led by our NROTC individuals and our pledge of allegiance. May we stand? R O T.
Allagard. All. Order. Colors. Ready. I. I. Age. Age and colors. Ready. I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Airy. Colors. Ready. I. Oh. Allers. Arch. Allagard. All. Order. Colors. Ready. I. Close the colors. Ready. Two. Of our. Age. Over. Arch. Allagard. All. Age. Age.
Hello, board members and everyone else. I am the commanding officer at Allen Community Learning Centers NJROTC program, and I will now let my staff introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Cadet Wilhelm. I'm going to 10th grade and I want to be a particle physicist after I graduate high school.
I'm Cadet Malchok. I'm going into 12th grade and I will join the United States Navy after high school.
I'm Cadet Durbeck. I am a senior in high school at CLC, and after high school, I would like to be a fire EMT.
I'm Cadet Limbu. I'm going to be sophomore at Allen High School, and I want to be astrophysicist after I graduate.
Thank you.
This time, we'll have our community and school reflections. From our board, if anyone would like to share.
I had the opportunity to stop by Firestone High School for the band Tag Day when the students were accessing to lunch. It was really festive environments, you know, the students and the staff and the Booster Club and everything like that. Really good to talk to some of the Booster Club members. As everybody knows, you know, we're in the midst of looking for director for Firestone CLC. And like I explained to them, that is a very, very important position because it has to be the right person. That means an array of different things need to come into play. So they were very much aware of that. It's been some time and several interviews, but still. It was just good to talk about it and to meet people that I hadn't prior to being.
Thank you. Anyone else?
A couple of things I want to mention. I went to the Akron Roundtable. They had an extra about the history of the Cuyahoga River and actually learned something new that I had never heard before, didn't realize, but I guess it makes sense. They were talking about the middle Cuyahoga and how it affects Summit County, and they're always focusing on the Cuyahoga and the river burning and things of that nature. But the time, I guess, that the river burned, there was more concern in Summit County about the tusk as opposed to the Cuyahoga River because of large company, I'll let them remain unnamed at this time, but they were using it like many people did back in those days for, you know, a sewage, if you will. So that was interesting. Also, I want to shout out to our CFO, Ryan Pendleton, and his family sponsored that event. And it was a little bit different, out of the ordinary for Akron Roundtable because it was an evening roundtable, which was very nice. A lot of people attended. It was a great, great venue. Also attended the Love Akron Community Breakfast. Once a year, they pray for educators and education, and once again, very inspiring breakfast that they had.
Yes?
I'll just briefly say a big thank you to the Fallen Fathers Foundation, YBPC, and the City of Akron who sponsored the Backpack to School event at Lock III. It was awesome. Free haircuts, really cool school supplies and backpacks. I got there around 1:00 or so, and I'd heard that, started at noon, but at 11:30, a line started forming downtown, which was really, really awesome. So thanks very much to those groups. And I also got a chance to pop by the West Akron 5K and saw Reverend Walker there as well. That was a really well-attended event as well. The 5K kicked off at Buckdill High School, Buckdill CLC, rather. And I also just want to quickly say thank you to everybody. My son is almost eight weeks now. And I appreciate everybody and all of your awesome thoughtfulness. It's been a ride with two of them.
Still, you didn't bring him, so I just.
Yeah, next time, maybe.
Any other board member has anything to share? I did want to highlight, along with the West Akron 5K, the AASEP Closing Luncheon and Program that was held on Friday, August 9th. And it's a collaboration with all of our partners, many of our partners dealing with engineering, where many of our students get an opportunity to do internships there. And so it was a great collaboration, a great venue for the students to participate and share. Three of our students in the area got a chance to speak about their experiences, working with some of our partners in the area in engineering, and saw how that could be very lucrative. And my understanding is that's one of the highest-paying jobs there is. So the students got to know, you may not be seen in a suit and tie or in a nice outfit. You may be back in the background, but you're making money. And so they need to research those areas that might be a field in which they feel comfortable in. And we want to thank our science person in our area, Mrs. Halasi, for sharing in that along with many of the partners that were present there. So we appreciate what they've done. Nothing else at this time. We do not have any requests to address the board, but we do have a recognition at this time. And at this time, Mr. Miller will make a presentation.
It's actually an honor for me to get up here to make this presentation. I told people I did not have Mrs. White when I was at Firestone High School, though she was teaching there, but my three daughters had the privilege of having Mrs. White. And my one daughter, who lives in New York City, when they saw something on social media about what was happening tonight, she got excited and posted something, and my other daughter corrected her, "It's Dr. White." Mrs. Judith White graduated from Cogga Falls High School and continued her education at the University of Akron. She graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree in education with a concentration in physical education, health, and English. Judy later attended Kent State University, where she earned a master's degree. In 2011, she obtained her Doctorate of Philosophy degree in secondary education. In 1969, Judy was hired by Akron Public Schools with a starting salary of $6,600. She was assigned to Firestone High School as a physical education teacher and taught swimming. In 1977, she began teaching English, a subject she has never left. On her own, every year, she has taken busloads of students to Stratford Festival in Ontario. She has chaperone trips to Europe so that students could visit England, France, Italy, and Greece to enhance their cultural background and bring life to the literature that they study. Judy was one of the core teachers instrumental in bringing the International Baccalaureate Program to Akron Public School. This year was her 22nd year teaching IB classes, and 100% of her students passed the IB examination as her students have for most of those 22 years. Her student scores consistently surpassed the worldwide average. In addition to IB, Judy has also taught summer school, has been the yearbook advisor, National Honor Society advisor, and volleyball coach. Many of her assignments were rite of passage for her students and became a tradition at Firestone that students never forgot. Hamlet videos and Oscar night, cultural diaries and Chaucer notebooks. Judy has never left the halls of Firestone High School and has been an exceptional teacher there for 50 years. Judy has earned the Building Teacher of the Year Award several times. In 2006, she earned the Distinguished Marilyn Parks Lifetime Achievement Award. Judy has received many outstanding evaluations and has been acknowledged for being a credit to the profession and a valuable asset to the Akron Public. A parent once noted that Judy was to his daughter what a teacher was to him when he was in high school. Quote, "One who treated students like adults and brought them to a higher plane of learning and maturity, especially motivation." Outside the walls of Firestone, she has taught English composition classes at the University of Akron and worked in their writing lab. She is also an AP exam reader. Outside of education, Judy worked at Macy's for many years. She is also a marathon runner who has participated in the Cleveland Marathon and the Marine Corps Marathon in Washington, DC. It has been an honor and a privilege to have Judy White on our teaching staff for the last 50 years, and we wish her well as she retires and moves into the next phase of her life. Congratulations on a job well done, and thank you for your dedicated service to the students of the Akron Public.
On behalf of the board, on behalf of our superintendent, the staff, all of those who are here, and a great array of supporters, we want to share with you the Distinguished Employee Emeritus Certificate. The Akron Board of Education extends to you its gratitude and appreciation for your dedicated service to the children of this community. We commend you for the excellent performance. As you conclude your service, even though you want to spend one more year with Akron Public Schools, we offer you our warmest personal regards for continued success and satisfaction in your future endeavors. The Akron Board of Education hereby designate Judith White as honorary member of the staff of Akron Public Schools, awarded August 12, 2019. You would come forward at this time? Say something and introduce. Yes? Stand here. Forward.
Thank you so much for the accolades. Again, teaching the wonderful students that I've had the opportunity to be involved with, to help motivate, to push a little harder, to have them come back and say that my class was harder than their college classes, but they were prepared and ready, has been the biggest, the best honor I could ever have. I'd like to thank my husband for willing to go on vacation while I had a suitcase full of research papers to grade, understanding why I would stay up till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning grading one more essay. Have the opportunity to work and teach with so many other wonderful teachers who cared as much as I do and always will. I cannot say enough. I will miss so many of those activities, but I plan to not be a stranger to Firestone. I'm going to help chaperone the Stratford trip, which we've done for many years, and continue to be as involved as others are willing to have me be involved. So thanks to Judy Harrison, to Jenny Bevan, to Jenny Walls, to Suzanne, to my best friend, Wendy, to Jenny, who has gone with me to Europe, to my husband, of course, who has put up with all of this and been the best supporter, especially when I took 11 years to do the doctoral dissertation, but did it. And Ms. Lassa back there, we had many classes together and thought, "How can we get through this?" And we did it, and we earned it. So I will miss all of it. And the wonderful Board of Education, who's always been so supportive, my wonderful principal, Mr. Johnson, well as many others who are sitting here. I just can't say enough, but most of all, my students, I will miss you all so much.
I know there are many, many well wishers that are present, and if you didn't have an opportunity to express by either a bouquet of flowers or some other kind of expression, we want to thank you for what you have done to encourage her outstanding service, not only to Firestone CLC, but to the Akron Public Schools. Thank you so very much. We're going to continue with our board meeting, and you can stay, if you'd like, or you can leave at this time. Under our communications, we'll have a presentation of our College and Career Academies, an update by Rachel Tecca. And if those of you who received the Akron Beacon Journal, there was an outstanding article there, and we'll get some additional information this evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide some updates about our College and Career Academy transformation. We always start with our district focus, which is to be the number-one urban school in the United States. And we really feel strongly that the initiative to transform to College and Career Academies is the strategy to help us get there. Tonight, I'd like to make sure that we cover the following two objectives. First, make sure that you all are well-aware of the results from North as our trailblazer school, as well as the first year of implementation with freshman academies. And secondly, to make sure that you're well-aware of the focus for the transformation in our high schools, elementary and middle schools for 2019 and 2020. So let's start with North. North High School has been our trailblazer school over the last three years. We began freshman academies in 2016 and 2017. Our graduating class of 2020 will be the first cohort who have had the academies experience all four years of high school, which is exciting. North moved to the block in 2017 and 18, and what the block means is they had four courses for 90 minutes on A-Day, four courses of 90 minutes on B-Day. So they will be going into their third year of that type of master scheduling, and you're going to see some of the outcomes from that new type of instructional delivery model. Lastly, I just had to mention the fact that North High School has been hugely transparent in what has worked well for them, what hasn't worked well for them, and helped us prepare the rest of our high schools for this transformation. So let's share some of the outcomes for North for the last three years. What you'll see is a list of the end-of-course exams offered at the high school by content area. So you see in 2016 and 2017 where the baseline was for each of those subject areas. In 2017, 2018, they had increases, and some significant increases, in every content area except geometry. You saw a dip in that geometry score in 2017 and 2008. Moving out to OST results from 18 and 19, you see every content area moved in the right direction for improvement. So I think as the trailblazer school, we're seeing some really positive outcomes with the transformation to academies, as well as then instructional shift to the 90-minute block for our students with the end-of-course exam. I will say this, speaking to Principal Sabetta, she wanted to make sure you were well-aware that, she knows there's still significant room for improvement, and she anticipates growing each of these subject areas year in and year out. But I think overall, we see some positive trends. Next, I'm going to share with you some information about our freshman academy. Freshmen academies launched in 2018, 2019. All of our freshman academies went through a three-day training called Effective Team Training. That training was designed to build cohesive, small learning communities where they learn to wrap around supports for students within their academy. We were in a different type of structure last year, so they were charged with not only working their academy work in, but as well as professional learning communities in one meeting per week. So when you see some of those outcomes, know they were trying to do two kinds of tasks at the same time within the same meeting. They also were charged with creating SMART goals that they were accountable for, and they based their SMART goals on some predictive analytics that we were provided to them through the Summit Education Initiative. So I will share a little bit more about that with you here. We then used some of our top teacher leaders out of the freshman academy to help train the rest of the district in Effective Team Training. So I think we're growing our leaders as well as making sure that our academies are highly functioning. So let's talk a little bit about the SMART goals for freshman academy. We used our predictive data from the Summit Education Initiative, who has studied our data inside and out, and gave us these three indicators of success. Freshmen who end freshman year with six and a half credits or more, a 3.0 grade point average, and less than eight days' absence are four times more likely to graduate high school, college, and career-ready. So our freshman academy teams, through team training, looked at these predictive analytics and set their SMART goals to those indicators. Here are some of the outcomes that we've got. So when you look at the average number of credits, and if you want to look at the second handout that looks like this, the data's a little bit bigger for you to see. The average number of credits went up in almost every high school across the city with an average number of free credits earned district-wide. I think what's even more exciting when you look at the number of credits earned is the second slide, if you turn to the next graph. This one looks at the percentage of freshmen that earn six and a half credits or more. And as you can see, there was a 39% increase in the number of students earning six and a half credits or more. So that was a trending data point that we were proud of. That second indicator of a 3.0 GPA or higher, we made some positive trends. There's a 3.8% increase in the number of freshmen with a GPA of a 3.0 or higher, but we know we have a lot to do in that area. The next data point that's shared with you is around climate, school climate. Summit Education Initiative indicates that eight days or less is the data point that predicts success for our young people. To measure that, we really looked at in-school as well as out-of-school suspension data. And when you see our out-of-school suspension data in the freshman academy decreased by 24%, that's the type of data we're looking at. We're well-aware that there's a lot of room for improvement, but I think the idea that we were having adult wraparound support for our kids, tracking them, mentoring them, supporting our students, really made an impact on our suspension data. The next slide is the out-of-school suspension, and there's a 27.8% decrease in our out-of-school suspension data. Again, a lot of work to be done around our school climate, but I think that trend after one year of implementation of freshman academies speaks to the effectiveness of ownership of learning, partnership with communities and businesses, and kind of a dedication of our teachers to make sure that they're going to do whatever it takes for their students. Onto the focus for 1920. We have seen, I think, hopefully, over the last two years, many of you have seen the slide on the screen. We're really talking about three major shifts in College and Career Academy. The idea that we're building small learning communities, that we're beginning to teach through that interest areas and make learning relevant, and lastly, that we're engaging our business and community partners at a deep level to provide experiences for our kids inside and outside the classroom. I wanted to keep you rooted in that work because the focus areas will align to those three areas. So in 2019, 2020, in the high school, we basically have two groups focusing on two different things, two different areas. In 10th through 12th grade, for our full launch of College and Career Academy, they will be focusing on building a strong, small learning community. They were trained in highly effective teaming. They will be provided coaching and support, feedback, and that their goal that we will deem a success by the end of the year is if they build a culture and a sense of belonging for their teachers, for their families, for their students, and for our business partners. That is the focus for our academies in 10th through 12th grade. For our freshman academies, they have a year under their belt, right? They've spent a year building their culture and building that small learning community. We're going to add on to that this year, and they're going to focus on thematic learning. We're going to add on to that this year, and they're going to focus on thematic learning. Their goal will be to design some integrated lesson, based on interest area, based on common content standards, so that they kind of build on that sense of belonging, but start to seek connection between math, English, science, social studies, and so forth. So that's the foundation. If this visual helps you make sense of that, our freshman academies are on the top of the screen, where you see that foundation of a small learning communities, and we're building on that thematic learning, where our career academies in 10th through 12th grade will really just be focusing on building that sense of belonging for the 1920. Our elementary focus for College and Career Academies is built as the foundation or the cornerstone to this transformation. We know that it's going to be critically important for our students in K-5 to have really important experiences in the community provided by the GAR Foundation, where they're doing field studies and career exploration. So that will be provided during the 2019, 2020 school year. We will be having a leadership development through our ambassador program. We will be publishing our Portrait of an Elementary Scholar, so that, like our Portrait of the Graduate, we'll have an elementary, a portrait of an elementary scholar that will help guide the work. And we're going to start to infuse more of that inquiry-based learning into the lessons for our elementary students. And not to leave out middle school, as they are the bridge, right? They are the bridge between that foundation of what we're building in our elementary school to preparation, so they have full, so our students have full access to those academies in high school. We will be creating a plan in partnership with the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation for our middle schools to transform around social-emotional learning, climate and culture, and inquiry-based learning. They will be spending most of this year designing this strategic plan with a lot of input from multiple stakeholders, so that our students have a really strong foundation and are ready for their high school experience. Our goal is to make sure that our graduates from Akron Public Schools graduate with that 21st century skillset, ready to pursue whatever it is they choose to after high school. They leave us with a plan, right, and some skills and competencies to be competitive. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of board members? Yes.
First, I love the cornerstone and the bridge. I love storytelling, so that's one of my favorite things out of the presentation. One of the things I noticed that kind of is different than what we've been told to expect in, in student achievement instructional policy. We've been told to expect, that often there's a dip in scores when, on your OSTs, when you start the academies, because we retain more students. So instead of us leave, instead of them leaving or giving up, that more students stay. That's not shown here. Do you have any reason that you can point to that that happened? I mean, we're expecting that to happen in the first couple of years.
Yeah, that's a really good question. You know, it's interesting. I think that, especially when I look at, with North being the Trailblazer, there are a lot of things that we did, because they were new, that we've learned from and won't be repeating for our other high schools. So with all of those kind of like, oh, we should have put a woulda, you would think there would be some dips in their achievement scores. I think that just speaks to the leadership, as well as the teachers at North High School, who have worked diligently to make sure that they're continually putting kids first and making sure that achievement doesn't take that dip. I don't, I know, I wish there was a better answer, but usually...
No, I think it's fantastic. I mean, we don't want to, to under, you know, underappreciate that, but I, you know, I know we've been prepared and hopefully prepared the rest of the board, that that could happen as a result of us retaining more students. Also, I just have to throw this in here, since Mr. Alexander and I are sitting here, and because the rest of the board will just get sick of it, but it doesn't surprise us that North High School is trailblazing and leading the way.
Vikings.
Vikings all the way.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm a little partial myself.
Yes.
Yes.
I like what we're doing, too. And I, one of my biggest things is being the one who has to, I like all this here. I do have one question. I know we have in the middle school, which is really, really needed, because that's when they're all over the place, but if we need it, and if we see there's a need in the elementary school, and we implement some of that in there, just to help those kids while they're going to become emotional, such as being in elementary, they continue in high school, will we continue to work with them to help them as well?
I do think there's a focus from the district to look at a K-12 social-emotional supports for our learners, but I might defer that to Dr. McWilliams Woods, if there's something more that I should speak.
If you go up to elementary, middle, and high school, everything wrapped into the portrait of a scholar, the elementary, the portrait of a graduate, or the middle school high school, if you think of the characteristics that were developed, that are outlined in that portrait, the only way to get to those is to have positive social-emotional learning happening in the school, because so much of it is about collaboration, problem-solving, you know, being able to think way out of the box, that inquiry-based learning, getting along with others, being on time, being responsible, being drug-free, and there's, you can go on and on on those employability skills. So we have to have that whole pipeline, pre-K through 12, with the social-emotional learning, very obviously important to the academy, over there on that side, you know, you're often...
She knows, she will say, and if I don't say this right now, she will yell at me later, that elementary, right, and if you don't start working on those social-emotional learning skills now, it's going to just compound to a little bit of...
Right, because I wanted to see that, because I mean, there's so much that's going on nowadays. You start talking about the social and emotion, and, and learning, and, and trauma and all this stuff, it's, it's really needed. I'm glad to hear that we're going to be going from elementary, pre-K, all the way to the middle school, if you don't miss any kids, you know, caught off the boat, and you're new to the school. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Yes.
Real quick, when you were talking about the focuses for 10 to 12, and then freshmen, because the focus is in the small learning communities, that doesn't mean that we're also not focused on growing business partnerships or thematic learning. Could you just talk a little bit more about that?
Absolutely. Yeah, the, the other structures that are designed around College and Career Academies, as far as business and community engagement, as well as some of the supports, what I want to stay focused on is that foundation of a small learning community. We have to get that right before we get to them, that next level. We will be continuing to grow all of our partnerships by pathway for the entire, probably for the next few years.
So we're still looking for partners and businesses who want to be part of all of our learning environments.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we need a motion to approve the July 29 regular board meeting minutes. And properly moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baylor? Mr. Bravo?
Will you also open this up on here to try it out?
I am, it may not be showing on yours, but it is on mine. I'm taking roll call under the new system right now. Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Are you showing who's joined and who's not?
I don't have any joined. I have all marked present, and so it says I can mark unanimous, or I have an open online voting, because we wanted to call it in public. That may be why you're not seeing it. You want me to try that for the next vote?
Yeah, I'd be curious to see how it works as well. And I wondered if you showed, because I joined, I clicked "Join the Meeting," so I wondered if it showed you, "Join the Meeting."
Okay.
All right, let's move on then to our personnel recommendations.
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 43 personnel recommendations in categories five through 16. And before moving for approval, I'd like Kathy McVey to introduce five new staff members.
All right, good evening. Just going to go in alphabetical order this evening for all of you, so Mr. Effinger, if you'd come up, please. I'd like to introduce to you tonight Mr. Benjamin Effinger, graduated from East Canton High School and received the Eagle Scout. He attended Kent State University, where he earned his Bachelor of Science degree in education, majoring in integrated social studies. He was on the dean's list three times while he attended Kent State University. He also attended the University of Akron and earned his Master's in educational administration. Mr. Effinger did his student teaching at Field High School, and then was hired as a social studies teacher with Life Skills, where he taught five years. During his time at Life Skills, his OGE scores increased 11% in one year, with increased scores each year thereafter. He then was hired as a principal and lead instructional coach, positioned with Garfield Academy at Excel Schools for the next five years. Tonight, we are recommending Mr. Effinger for a Dean of Students position, where he will be assigned at Boris CLC. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to extend my thanks to the school board and the superintendent for this opportunity. I spent the last 10 years in education in some various different charter schools, had a lot of different experiences that I feel are going to be very valuable at, at Akron Public. I'm really, really excited, and then once again, I wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity.
Mr. Petrick? Come up, please. I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Joseph Petrick. He graduated from Cloverleaf Senior High School and attended the University of Akron, where he earned his bachelor's in music education. He also attended Liberty University from 2009 to 2014, where he earned a Master's in Christian Leadership, followed by a Master's in Education Administration and Supervision. Prior to working at Akron Public Schools, Mr. Petrick taught general music for grades PK through third for 13 years at Green Local Schools, and was an administrative intern for Brooklyn City School. Mr. Petrick worked for Mansfield Schools for two years as a teacher, before being assigned as a principal-designee assistant principal for six months. He left Mansfield Schools to be a principal for Dalton Local Schools until being hired for Akron Public Schools. He was hired by Akron Public Schools in August of 2018 to teach music at Ennis and Mason CLCs. Tonight, we are recommending Mr. Petrick for a Dean of Students position, and he will be assigned to King and Portage Path CLC.
Thank you. I again would like to thank Mr. James and the Board of Education for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to a positive, proactive, and pleasant year here at Akron Public, and I can't wait to be a part of that stepping stone to be the number-one urban district in the United States. So let's get busy. Thank you.
Julie? I'd like to introduce to you Mrs. Julie Schmidt, who graduated from Kent Theater Roosevelt High School in Kent. She then attended the Ohio State University, where she earned her Bachelor of Arts degree, focusing on political science with a minor in French. She then attended Kent State University, where she earned a Master of Arts and majored in elementary education. She continued her schooling at Kent and received an educational specialist degree, majoring in educational administration leadership. Mrs. Schmidt was hired as a Title I tutor with Kent City Schools for six months, until she was hired into a full-time teaching position with Crestwood Local Schools. She taught eighth-grade social studies and reading for 10 years, until she was promoted to middle school principal at Crestwood for nine years, and was then the director of curriculum for four years. Tonight, we are recommending her for a Dean of Students position, and she will be assigned to Ritzman and Betty J. CLCs. Congratulations.
Thank you so much to the board and everyone. I am so super excited to be a part of the Akron Public Schools. It's kind of a full-circle thing for me. My grandparents graduated from the Akron Public Schools, and my mom did also. And I can just beat the story a little bit. My mom was offered her first teaching job here in 1959, and her starting salary was $4,300 a year, so, but thank you all. I'm super excited to be here.
Jennifer? I'd like to introduce Ms. Jennifer Stokie, who graduated from Washington High School and continued her, continued her education, earning her Bachelor of Arts degree in elementary and special education at Walsh College. She furthered her education by attending Ashland University and earning her Master of Education and Curriculum Instruction in 2004. In 2018, she earned her Master of Arts in School Leadership from Concordia University in Chicago. She was then hired by Fairless Local Schools as a special education teacher, where she worked for four years. In 2000, she moved on to Canton City Schools as an intervention specialist, where she has worked for the last 19 years. In August of 2018, she moved out of her intervention specialist role and became a yes, you are expected to succeed, teacher, and was the PBIS chairperson and PTO liaison and member. In this role with Canton, she also assisted in implementing procedures and roles for student conduct created, implemented, and monitored behavior plans, and provided targeted academic and social-emotional instruction to students. She has also served in several leadership roles, as a BLT member, district leadership team member, Equity and Excellence Ambassador, and care team member. Tonight, we are recommending her for a Dean of Students position, and she will be assigned to Cyberlink CLC. Congratulations.
Hello. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the students, the families, and the community of Akron. I am so honored to be offered this position, and I am so excited to get started with this school year. Everyone has been so welcoming already, and today's only been my first day, so thank you very much.
Stancy? This is Ms. Stancy Sykes. She is a proud graduate of Central Howard High School. She then attended the University of Akron, where she earned a Bachelor of Arts in Business and Organizational Communication. She continued on in her educational quest and earned her Master of Arts in Education and Higher Educational Administration. In 2013, she completed a Master of Arts in Special Education at Ursuline College. She also holds a principal certificate, which she obtained from Cleveland State University in 2016. Ms. Sykes began her career in education at the university level. Before working at the secondary and elementary level as a teacher, she was an academic advisor at the University of Akron, where she worked with students and families to plan academic pathways from freshman orientation to college graduation. She also worked on campus and in local high schools as an educational specialist with the federally-funded Trio Program to promote a college-going culture. Before joining the University of Akron, she worked for Cleveland Scholarship Programs as a college access advocate and advisor to high school students planning to attend college. Ms. Sykes also worked as an admissions counselor and recruiter for Kent State University, where her recruitment territory included the Cincinnati and Dayton areas. In January of 2013, Ms. Sykes was hired as a reading and math tutor for Helen Arnold CLC. She was hired full-time at Akron Schools in August of 13 as an intervention specialist at Bootele CLC. She's currently an intervention specialist at Schumacher CLC, and tonight, we are recommending her for a Dean of Students position, and she will be assigned to Barbara.
Good evening, and thank you all, thank you to the board, and also to Superintendent James and Assistant Superintendent McWilliams. This is just a moment for me, graduate of Akron Public Schools. So exciting to be here as an educator and also as an administrator now. I recall when I first finished my program at Ursuline, my dad said, "Well, where are you going to apply?" I said, "Akron Public School." He was like, "Just one school? Just one school?" He was like, "That's crazy." I said, "It's not, I just want, this is where I want to work, this is where I want to be." So again, I'm just so excited to be here. Thank each of you for supporting all of us, supporting our students and our community.
And with that, Mr. President, these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Yes.
First of all, the standard was set very high for all of you, so I'm glad to see you rose to the occasion. Having to follow Dr. White is not an easy task. I just wanted to mention really quickly... I just wanted to mention really quick, I did get a chance to speak to her before she left, or when she first came in. I did have two sons that had her, and she was actually a home instructor for my youngest when he couldn't attend school for a while. She's a force of nature, and the one thing that my now junior in college said to me is, "All these kids freak out in college about a five-to-seven-page paper with bibliography." And he's like, "I could do that in my sleep after Dr. White's class." So, he was one of those that really she inspired. The one thing I remember the most out of Dr. White's tenure was when we were closing out Firestone High School and switching to the CLC. The T-shirts that were sold that year were about Dr. White. Usually had an "I Survived Dr. White" shirt. The T-shirts that year were "I Survived Dr. White," but the building didn't. So, that was one of my favorites. So, I just wanted to share that. She had a huge impact on thousands of students over the years, and I know that our new hires are, from what they share with us, are going to be amazing as well.
Thank you. At this time, we're ready to vote. Roll call.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Ball vote?
It all worked.
Try that.
Our... That's board letter, legal contracts, and board policy. Twenty-one. An agenda?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration two motions and two resolutions on the consent agenda in category twenty-one. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Yes.
I just want to make a quick comment. The... The textbook, that's here, isn't it? No, it's on behind. See, I can't see it. Okay. I just want to make note that the textbooks were vetted by not only teachers and staff, but members of the community for the CLC.
Thank you. We're ready to vote now. Roll call.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
On to business affairs?
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 22 business affairs recommendations in category 23. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Item number 2319. Can we round a little bit more on that and what those positions would be?
2319 is the Ed Mensom Service Agreement.
Yes.
That's for our APS Online. That's the platform that we use to deliver that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Roll call.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor? Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, superintendent's report?
Just a couple of things, Mr. President. One, we're just asking the public, as we begin to start school in a half, a little bit more than that, to be mindful of traffic laws in terms of, we'll have a lot of buses and a lot of kids walking in our school zones, just for people to be mindful as they're driving through town, as our kids return back to school. Last week, I had an opportunity to go through Ellet CLC, and I know we have a tour, I believe, this Friday?
Yes.
Nice facility. I really like the area where we're going to be moving our TV and radio station, and then all of the career pathway labs are all updated, so it's really a wonderful place. So, we're looking forward to that. Also, Saturday Summit for Kids. We had a very successful backpack adventure at the Akron Zoo about, was that 10 days ago, maybe? Yeah, so we'll continue that with a variety of organizations. We'll be on hand at the Janus Night Center, and we'll have staff there, and that'll be a wonderful opportunity for our kids and families to get some resources, more information, and also pick up some school supplies.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. By way of president's report, we are aware that a lot of things that have happened in our community, and particularly just recently, violent shooting and unfortunately death. A couple of months ago, Shamas Malik, myself, Lynda Mobian, and Marilyn Keith met briefly to look at ways in which we can collaborate, to figure out how we can address that issue. So, in the coming weeks, there will be, in the Ward Eight area, a public meeting where we can discuss some of those issues. And I'm asking, I've already talked personally with Lisa Mansfield, but also Bruce, if you wouldn't mind sharing in that, when they get together at their next meeting, planning scheduled meeting for that, we'll try to get information to you so that we can begin to collaborate with the churches in that area, as well as with public schools in the city, on how we might be able to work together. Treasurer's report?
I'd like to give an update on House Bill 305. It's been a quiet summer, obviously, with post the adoption of the new state budget, the governor's budget. There was an attempt to get the components of House Bill 305, or what's called the Fair School Funding Plan, in place before the end of the fiscal year, so we weren't successful at doing that. However, the next best thing was, we have a standalone bill, as you know, with 66 cosponsors, which is pretty amazing, to say the least, in terms of sponsorship. They are, the legislature is on recess, and due to resume talks on House Bill 305 sometime in late September, so that'll start some activities for sure for all of us, myself, the superintendent. And so, I think I just want to highlight the fact that this is the time for school funding reform talk. I just wanted to set the stage and keep it in front of you about this attempt versus others. We have a 30-year, three-generation school funding reform talk, four different Supreme Court cases that have deemed Ohio's school funding mechanism unconstitutional. We have a Speaker of the House, Larry Householder, who was Nathan Deroff's Little League coach, and he has a willingness to take this on. We have the President of the Senate, Larry Obhoff, whose wife is a public school teacher. We have a Republican and a Democrat, Representative Bob Cupp and John Patterson, who are term-limited and who are very education-focused. And we have a governor who, in the first time in some time, has talked similar language that we have around social-emotional learning and well-being. Now is the time. There is no better time, and if it doesn't happen now, I'm afraid we will miss generations to come. So, one of the feedback from, pieces of feedback from you and other education communities is, we need to give everybody an opportunity to come together. On Friday, we had a meeting, a few of us had a meeting with the Chorus Superintendent's Group, and that's the Council of Rural and Appalachia Schools. There's 140 districts that are a member of that group, and it was just educator to educator. There was not any other outside lobbyists or influences in that meeting. And the realization was, we as an education community need to stop approaching the legislature as separate, independent groups, whether it be the Ohio Eight, whether it be Chorus, whether it be the Alliance for High Quality Education, or those schools on the CAP, or those schools on the Guarantee, that we need to come together as one education community. And it was a really powerful group. There were, obviously, the Ohio Eight was represented in myself, and Chorus, those districts who have an average maybe of less than 2,000 student districts and below. And so, we pledged to each other that we would start to form a coalition that is not going to be separate testimony but one testimony. And we hope to extend that to OSBA, BASSA, and OASB. And so, that's our lessons learned from our previous attempt, is that we need to speak with one voice across Ohio and all students in Ohio. So, stay tuned to that, and we'll definitely get our Board of Education plugged in down in Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I loved what you have to say there about really speaking as one education community, because I think this is the most significant progress that we've made in this conversation in recent history. And I think that it's important that you've recognized that as a group, or as separate groups, but as one. And so, I'm really looking forward to that and hoping that there's a role for us to play, because, you know, at the base of it, the legislators, while they are working in Columbus, they are also still local, and so are we. And so, I would love to see us being plugged in, because, again, I really think that you there's no disagreeing that this is the most significant progress we've made in this conversation, probably in recent history, but since Deroff. And this is the closest, I think, we've come to a real and actionable plan, and would love to see it forward, so thank you.
Any other comments or expressions? At this time, committee reports. Finance, Capital Management Committee?
No report, other than we meet next Tuesday, or next Monday, sorry, the 19th.
Legal Contracts and Board Policy Committee? Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee?
No report, but I want to take a second. Mr. Bravo just reminded me to thank Deborah Folk for her hard work on getting the gates put up at the crossing at Firestone High School. I think I first came to Deborah, I think I'd been on the board two weeks at that point, and so, it's been a decade of her trying and working, and working with city, state, federal, plus the railroad company, if I'm not incorrect there, to make this, to get the ball rolling on this and to make it happen. And I was so giddy when I first saw the work going on at that crossing that I was sending her pictures in their senior leadership retreat. So, just a huge shout-out to Deborah for helping make our students safer. It was the only crossing in West Akron. Even the one over in the Summit County Public Health parking lot had a gate, and the Castle Boulevard, Castle area crossing did not, and Deborah has been instrumental in helping to make that happen, so thank you.
Soon as the work was finished, I was texting Lisa to see if she saw that it was finished. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much for your continued work for Akron Public Schools. At this time, any unfinished business? Any new business?
We have two items. The first one is an amendment to the I Promise School Documentary Agreement, and I believe Diana Fidels back there. No? To just quickly review some of the minor changes in that agreement, which still preserves the rights of Akron Public Schools to have some say in that agreement.
Yes.
So, thank you, members of the board. Just real quick, as you know, the I Promise School has entered into a documentary film agreement with Lowback Productions to film a documentary of one year at the I Promise Academy. The filming has completed as of June of this year. However, there's still this whole slew of work that needs to be done to bring that filming to a full documentary that can then be distributed and viewed, and so on and so forth. So, when we entered into the initial agreement, there was no distributor lined up. The company took a risk, saying, "We're going to go ahead and get filming. We need to capture this very important footage from day one of the new building." So, they took a risk on that, and it paid off because they were able to now secure a distributor. Because they have now secured a distributor, there have been a couple of requests for edits that they have, that they've asked us to consider to the original agreement that we signed. So, those edits fall into two categories. One is sort of just practical housekeeping things that the production company and the distributor have asked us to look into. And then, the second are more legal in nature that have to do with sort of our rights and obligations under the agreement. The more important ones for the board would be sort of these other housekeeping-type items. And some of those amendments that they have requested have to do with the premiere of the film. In the initial agreement, it was to be premiered in Akron, and now they're asking that the premiere not necessarily take place in Akron, that it can be anywhere in the world, that there would be a premiere party in Akron. Some of the other edits have to do with the fact that the, after reviewing the footage and having a distributor, that they no longer are interested in a full-length feature film of a documentary, but would like to have the rights to cut the film down into smaller segments that could be released over a period of time to tell the story in a different format than the original agreement accounted for. And so, those are sort of more of the creative housekeeping things that they're asking us to look into. And then, there's also some other issues and rights that are addressed in the amendment that we have been able to make sure that the school is protected, that our student identity and privacy is protected, and then our reputation and things like that are also protected throughout this creative process. So, those are kind of the broad categories of what kind of amendments they're looking to make to the agreement. Any questions?
Is this something we are approving tonight?
No.
Okay.
Just an update. I'm working with Diana to make sure that, you know, the board's rights are preserved and that we have given them the items that we're saying absolutely we can't do, and we're waiting to get back from their attorney.
I know that we had, if I may. First time, I'm sorry. I know that last time, too, you, and because it was part of contract negotiations, we discussed it more in executive session, but we, there were some specific lists of those requested changes, and kind of we gave you what the responses were, so I'm assuming before we would vote, too, we'll go back over what those were and how, what the outcomes were.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions on that item? The next?
The next is an amendment to the I Promise School Master Plan. In your board packet, I believe there was a summary of looking at the grade configuration, you know, initially contemplated, starting with, you know, working on first grade through eighth. We've looked at that and evaluated and would like to keep it at third grade on up through eighth grade and work through the next several years in adding another grade year until we reach the capacity at eighth grade. I know Keith Lickte has been working with the foundation and our staff in coming up with that recommendation, which I wholeheartedly support.
Yes, questions, comments?
This seems like a pretty change. I mean, we're now not serving, or the plan is now not to serve grades one and two at I Promise. Is that potentially a permanent recommendation, or is that just for these next couple of years?
No, I think that, yeah, I think that'll be a permanent recommendation, as we've looked at some of the data we would need to collect, and some of it's hard to find, particularly achievement data, you know, with a kindergarten or trying to determine whether they would come into I Promise. And then, also, what we're faced with is, when we look at having middle school and looking at our population projections, just having enough room to fit everyone in the current building, and limits on how we can actually expand. So, I don't know if Dr. McWilliams Woods has anything... So I don't know if Dr. McWilliams Woods has anything to add to that, but that's the recommendation, and I think it's.
The I Promise program is originally third grade anyway, so this isn't really much of a departure from what I Promise was before, it was a physical location.
But I think it's that combination of the facilities and having a STEM-based focus along with a family resource center, that that has to be the primary support in the building. So when we started to really build those out in the facilities, we would have to go to another building if we wanted to get with the first generation. And then the other major point is that we also, the goal of this school is to work with the students who are not responding to interventions, are typical interventions. And to make that decision at kindergarten, I think as we've been going through identifying students, the reality of making kind of this major decision when they've only had one year of school in kindergarten, we're really not giving them time to see if they're responding to interventions, keeping them so early in kindergarten. We want multiple years of data, we want to see if it's growing, and then the ones who are really not growing and not making a sense of growth, that's the ones that we want to target. And that, we really need multiple years to be able to figure this out.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Are we going to wait before we start looking? If we wait too long...
In all of our schools, we interview immediately in kindergarten. We're providing intensive intervention, part of the annual intensive intervention, and they're getting the social support. So it's really designed for kids. But most of our kids respond to that and make that progress. We're looking for students who are not responding to that. We maybe need that whole family additional support that we can provide them in the I Promise. Absolutely. Every single one of our schools provides that deep intensive level of support.
I thank you. I need a motion for amendment number one to the IPS Master Plan. So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any question or comments? Roll call?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We do need to recess into executive session.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
I had the new business item as well that we were going to add.
Thank you.
I had some students reach, I had a student reach out to me from North High School within the last few weeks, and she wanted to discuss the dress code policy at the high schools. And I had a really good conversation with her. You know, North is not air-conditioned. It had to be closed last year in September because it did get so hot. It's going to be hot again in September. It's going to happen. And she was concerned about what they're allowed to wear, which I pointed out to her, Mr. Alexander, that we weren't allowed to wear shorts when we were at North, so it was, she was very impressed with that. She was like, "I don't know how you guys did it." But we talked a little bit about how not only the dress code is enforced, how it's written, how she felt that female students are maybe unnecessarily told that it's their responsibility for how male students perceive their clothing. So we had an interesting discussion about that. I did talk to Mrs. Lasher, and she had some great suggestions on some dress codes that are coming out across the country, and she sent me a few, and I'd love to share those. What I would like to recommend is that our two committees, both the Instructional Policy and Student Achievement, and the Policy Committee, take a look at this in conjunction with our Student School Board, and have them help us to take a look at our current dress code. We haven't looked at it for a couple of years. Re-look at the uniform policy, re-look at our high school dress code, and make sure that we are not unnecessarily discriminating against our female students, or making them feel uncomfortable in any way about their clothing, or their bodies, things like that. One of the, I love the wording on this, so I just want to read it out. It was from the New Oregon Now model for student dress code, and this sentence really stuck out to me. One of their goals was to ensure that all students are treated equally regardless of gender, gender identification, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, body type or size, religion, and personal style. So taking, keeping that in mind, I'd like to put forward that that's one of the things that Mrs. Lasher and I would like to take the lead on doing.
And we did talk about that in our scrimmage today. Thank you for reminding me of that. I had that on my mind and then jumped ahead. The superintendent had suggested also that part of our student board, this could be part of their year-long or half-year-long project, along with these two joint committees, to bring back to the board some suggestions as to what we would like to implement. Looked at, at least, Ms. Morgan, some tentative things that are throughout the country. One of the things that we were told that our new device allows us to do is to look everywhere at lots of policies around the country that we might be able to preview, and then come up what will work best for us here at Akron. We also talked about, as I mentioned to you when we had a conversation, about looking at the dress code as it relates to uniforms even in high school, and talked to our student board members about that to get some feedback. There was a concern by a couple of board meetings ago, some students felt that that would be something that they would like to get into uniforms, because then it would take away just tremendous pressure about having certain things, wearing certain things. So this, we can look at all those issues and...
I would love to see what our Student School Board had to say about that.
About that. Right. So those are, those are items. In the scrimmage as well, we may need to take a look at, for our professional staff, dress code. There is a dress code, but is that dress code being enforced, so that when we walk in our buildings, we'll be able to rightly distinguish between a student and a professional staff member, that attire might be. So those can be other areas that we can address as well. Okay, thank you. I don't think we need a motion, just you are now encouraged, mandated to move forward Any other new business? Our executive session. We do need to meet for executive session pursuant to our revised code, 121.22 G1, G2, and G4. Employment of a public employee or official of the school district. We need to meet to look at purchase or sale of property, as well as negotiations or bargaining session with employees concerning compensation and other terms, conditions of employment. I need a motion to go into executive session. So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Roll call?
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have agreed to go upstairs. Do we need to go upstairs for executive session, or what? We will move upstairs for our executive session.